Good morning. I call this hearing of the Senate Communications and Technology Committee to order, and I would like to welcome everyone to this hearing to discuss Senate Bill 810, sponsored by Senator Alment and myself. This bill would do two major things. One, it would consolidate all state IT systems. And two, it would strengthen our cybersecurity systems. The failure of the Commonwealth in handling some IT projects has been clear, particularly with regard to our state police radio project, as well as the unemployment compensation call centers. Additionally, the Departments of Human Services, Corrections, and Education with their teacher information management system all had data breaches that exposed the names and personal information of thousands of Pennsylvanians. These data breaches came on the heels of the cyber attack that caused the Department of Human Services Bureau of Vital Statistics computer system for birth and death certificates to go offline from June 20 until June 26 of 2018. This greatly impeded Pennsylvanians' access to essential documents, and we still are questioning what the explanation was as to what had happened. So, the state has had some challenges with mismanagement of hundreds of millions of dollars while many projects remain incomplete. And too many times, government is the last to respond to IT-related issues, which can often result in the waste of taxpayer dollars. Senator Alment is joining us here today, my fellow co-prime sponsor on this legislation. And Senator Alment, would you like to give a few opening remarks?
I want to express my thanks and look forward to working with you on this legislation, and look forward to the conversation that we're going to have this morning, and talk about IT consolidation and the efficiencies there, and just the important work on behalf of ensuring that we're representing taxpayers well and spending money well, and we have the appropriate expertise that we need in various state agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Alment. I'd also like to open it up for some opening remarks from Chairman Sanisaro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is obviously an important issue. We, across the board, whether in the public sector or the private sector, IT security is going to become an increasingly important issue for us to be focusing on. It can be a thorny issue in terms of figuring out what the best approach is to protect our information and our privacy and our data. I'm glad we're having this hearing today. I welcome the hearing because I think it's important that we hear from all the stakeholders in terms of what the best approach might be to ensuring that those goals are in fact met. And so I hope that in the course of this, we learn some information that will help inform this legislation or any other similar legislation that either the Senate or the General Assembly in general might consider down the road. So I look forward to hearing what the witnesses have to say today and moving forward on this important piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Sanisaro. So I'd like to begin our hearing today with our first panel. And joining us today are Mr. John McMillan, our Deputy Secretary for Information Technology, and the Chief Information Officer for the Commonwealth from the Office of Administration; Mr. Eric Avakian, Chief Information Security Officer, Office of Administration; and Mr. Ken Hess, Deputy Secretary for Procurement in the Department of General Services. We'll start with your opening remarks, and I would ask that you please summarize them as much as possible so that we have ample time for questions following your remarks. Mr. McMillan.
Good morning. Thank you, everyone. Co-chairs, committee members, we appreciate the opportunity and invitation to be here this morning. As you mentioned, Mr. Hess and Mr. Avakian are with me. We'll get to them very briefly. I've been with the Commonwealth since 2015 and served it for many years prior as an external supplier. Over 33 years of public sector and private sector experience, assisted other states with much of what we are trying to accomplish here in the Commonwealth. I think when we look at what has been accomplished in the last three or four years, there's a clear indication of flexibility, collaboration, and cooperation that has driven new outcomes in controlling costs, improving cybersecurity, and delivering benefit to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania citizens and businesses. This teamwork is an indication of not only the collaboration that needs to go on in terms of designing systems, building systems, running systems, and acquiring the services to do so, but it's also an indication of the dedication of the employees that spend much of their professional lives trying to drive those outcomes for the citizens of Pennsylvania. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Good morning, Chairman Committee. I believe that John is correct, that collaboration and cooperation has been a hallmark of our respective interactions over the past few years. Certainly, that has come to fruition in terms of savings for the Commonwealth. For example, since the reintegration of IT procurement with the Bureau of Procurement, we've saved $99.1 million on a spend of $580 in nine quarters. During that same period, CoStar's members have purchased over $786 million worth of IT equipment and services through contracts that are jointly developed by the Bureau of Procurement and the Office of Administration, Office of Information Technology. Interesting to note that $5 million of that was spent by the House and Senate as sort of an implicit endorsement of the value that our efforts have brought to bear. Probably more importantly, DGS plays a significant role in providing a check and balance to the Office of Administration and to agency efforts as regards IT procurement. Many times, things might happen like overscoping, for example, that we can put a fresh set of eyes upon. And finally, what was really interesting to me in the press release for this committee hearing is a quote that said, "I think the most helpful thing is that everyone agrees that our state will rely on technology more, not less, in years to come." I completely agree. And that's one reason why continued integration of our efforts is paramount. Enhanced technology embedded in products or integrated into our services require the adoption of IT procurement attributes in heretofore non-IT contracts. Having ready access to a pool of IT procurement specialists helps us to prepare our other goods and services teams for future developments, and it's currently working. Thank you.
Could we turn it over to Mr. Avakian, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Avakian.
Members of the committee, it's a pleasure to be here. Again, my name is Eric. I've been with the Commonwealth as a state employee since 2006. I've been in information security for over 20 years, starting in the Commonwealth as Deputy CISO in 2007, and in my current position since 2010, spanning three different administrations. In that time, of course, we have seen the cybersecurity threat landscape morph considerably. Cyber threats are on the rise, and the challenges of cybersecurity are definitely evident as we see in the daily news. But the approach to cybersecurity that we take in the Commonwealth is that of collaboration and that of working together and following industry best practices and industry standards. We follow standards such as the National Institute of Technological Standards, NIST, and also following other standards from other organizations such as Department of Homeland Security to make sure that our frameworks and our systems are secure. Through IT transformation and shared services, we've made great strides in progressing, working together across the Commonwealth and across the organization, bringing down costs through shared services and through this word called "collaboration" that we heard about earlier. So we've really focused, and my whole take on cybersecurity is really of a collaborative approach, working across state government, not just within state agencies, but throughout state government, local governments, school districts. Recently, we've done such things by working with our local counties, bringing services that we provide to our 80,000 state users in the Commonwealth, so that the counties have access and are now participating in those same services that we provide with our state agencies. By doing that, we've shared knowledge, we work together, and we brought down costs through an economies-of-scale model where everybody wins and there's no haves and have-nots. Like an airport. When you go to an airport and you travel, no matter what city you're in, the experience is the same. We're bringing that experience when it comes to cybersecurity throughout all levels of government, so that if you're a county employee, if you're in a school district, or if you're in your state offices, you all have that same level of security posture. Most recently, we've also brought the PA House of Representatives, who are also now participating in some of those same cybersecurity services. And again, by doing that, partnering together, lowering overall costs, and that's through the collaborative approach. We believe the collaborative approach provides flexibility through shared governance so that decisions are made in cybersecurity for the betterment of all citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Senator Alment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of questions related to statewide radio that was mentioned during Senator Phillips Hill's opening comments and the work that's been done with the rollout of the statewide radio. And it certainly seems to me, and when I had the opportunity to chair this committee last session, we held a number of joint hearings with Senator Volokhovich and Veterans Affairs, and we received a number of updates with respect to the rollout of P-25. And I believe the Pennsylvania State Police were given an opportunity to testify here this morning. I'm not sure why we don't have an opportunity to hear from them this morning, but my sense is that since the Pennsylvania State Police took responsibility for the rollout, that rollout has gone exceptionally well, that it has been on time, on budget, and this is after a number of years after OA had been responsible, and I think there had been clear indications of mismanagement prior to the Pennsylvania State Police taking responsibility for that rollout. And I certainly commend the work of Major Diane Stackhouse, who've had the opportunity to hear testify previously and provide this General Assembly with an update with respect to the progress, and I think she and her team have just done an outstanding job. And so I'm interested, from your perspective, how is that rollout going? Can you provide any update with respect to the timing of that rollout and meeting those deadlines and continue to do so on budget?
Thank you for the question. I absolutely agree that Major Stackhouse and her team has done a fantastic job rolling out a more open solution to deliver land-mobile radio services to those that help protect the lives of Commonwealth citizens. We are enthusiastic about their capabilities to continue to deliver those services. We believe it's in the right spot. We believe that when we have a center of excellence for delivering services, we ought to enthusiastically support it. From our perspective, that program remains on time and on budget. And from our perspective, it goes a little further. It protects the investments that were made in building out that network many years ago, and now we are able, through collaboration with state police, Department of General Services, we're able to deliver those services at a more cost-effective level while protecting those investments of the past. We think that's a good thing to let go as it is.
Do I understand accurately that there's been a decision to move responsibility back to OA from PSP? And if so, why would we change course?
There's been no such decision, respectfully. We believe that the decision that was made in roughly 2012 to transfer management responsibility for StarNet to state police from OA ought to stick. We see the passion for the success of the business. We see good decisions through the procurement process to acquire the right services and to move away from proprietary solutions as benefiting not only the state police, but the financial stability of the service. Any further comment? No, I want to echo your sentiments regarding Major Stackhouse and the job that the state police have done in leading this. Very early on, Secretary Topper, myself, and several other DGS members met with the state police to discuss their strategy going forward as regards procurement, and it was very sound in their executing, as the state police usually do, according to plan, on time, on budget.
So just to clarify, management of the network will remain with PSP? That's the intent?
That would be our preference, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Alment. If I may, a follow-up on Senator Alment's questions with regard to the management of that system. My understanding is that with a newly executed contract in the governor's office, that the state police assets in the next two years, when that contract lapses, will go under the control of a third-party vendor. Can you comment on that? If we're having great success with regard to the management of the assets under the existing system, why would the administration make the decision to turn those assets over to a third-party manager?
Thank you. Yes, Senator, this is part of an enterprise-wide attempt to utilize the existing assets that the Commonwealth has in its portfolio to not only bring in revenue, but to also facilitate communications network structures across the really large and diverse portfolio that we have. State police, we had many meetings with as regards the contract that you refer to. There are many, many provisions and conditions in that contract that are specific to the state police's needs, that they ask for and that we dutifully put into the contract. Additionally, on the back end, as proposals are brought to bear from the private marketplace, there's a governance structure that exists that the responsible agency has complete sign-off authority with regard to any changes to the existing structure or network. And I believe that the state police in the past have had commercial relationships with third parties on their assets, so this would be simply a continuation of that practice.
Thank you very much. I have pages of questions to ask, and we may not be able to get through them all, and so I might have to follow up with you. Mr. Avakian, I'm so glad to hear about the collaboration, and particularly the collaboration with the House of Representatives. I think that was a long time coming, and that work began many years ago, and I'm glad that that's the ultimate outcome. I think that's a good thing. And you talk about consolidation being done for efficiencies. So besides the organizational changes and the reporting structure, are there specific projects that you would point to as having great potential for demonstrating increased efficiencies in IT in the Commonwealth?
For cybersecurity, absolutely. So for instance, focusing on people, process, and technology, especially in cybersecurity, we've really placed an emphasis on people and security training, because our users are our first lines of defense, and making sure that our end-users are trained in cybersecurity concepts is vital to the protection of the Commonwealth's data and our resources. So taking that example, for instance, we've brought security awareness training and social engineering or phishing exercises, where we test our users periodically with sending them emails to see if they've learned from the training. By doing that, we identify areas of improvement within our areas of what is our risk, and also is our training working? How do we improve the training courses that we're offering? While we've been providing a common training security awareness platform to all 80,000 users, we recently, working again with the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, provided that same capability to all 67 counties. So all of their 75,000 end-users now have access to the same social engineering phishing exercises that we conduct here in the Commonwealth for our users on the state network. And they also now have access to a security awareness training platform to train their end-users. These are capabilities they didn't have before, and so through this shared service, like an airport model, where there are no haves and have-nots, and everybody gets the same level of service, we're able to achieve economies of scale. There's a consistency in service, so everybody's utilizing the same service. We've brought down costs per license because we've increased those licenses, so now the cost per license goes down. There's streamlined visibility, so we can now determine the value of that centralized service much more fluidly. And we share knowledge, so we learn from what the counties are doing, we learn from them, we talk to each other. So there's now relationships that have been built, and all of this has been done purely on collaboration. No legislation was needed to work together across collaboration work across state government. And so, again, recently, we've also worked with the PA House of Representatives. They're utilizing this service now, so now they've come on board. And most recently, we've started working with the IUs within the Commonwealth, who are also interested. So imagine, if you will, a cybersecurity service, again, where there are no haves and have-nots. Everybody has the same level of work. We've optimized a specific important service in cybersecurity, such as training. And that's just one example. So taking an example like that and bringing it across all levels of government, because as the citizens, when they think of government, they think of government. They don't look at it from a county perspective or those different offices. So how do we provide better services for all of our citizens? How do we streamline services so that we're optimizing what we do? And that's just one example of, again, of an efficiency and of an accomplishment that I think is very important to us, and that's really a blueprint for furthering the cybersecurity mission across our great Commonwealth.
Eric, do we work with federal agencies in this space to help us improve?
Yeah, so apart from that, we also work with the Department of Homeland Security, regularly performing risk assessments across our state network. We've also taken those same assessments and brought those to the county governments. The multi-state information sharing and analysis center, where all states participate, is also a service provider to states, and now the counties are now leveraging services and the locals from the multi-state ISAC, as well as our Pennsylvania National Guard also has a cybersecurity capability, and they're now providing out services to some of our state agencies and to our local governments as well. So we're utilizing a vast array of different services, and of course, all of these are free services that the federal government, multi-state ISAC, and national government provide, and these are just other examples of how we continue to improve cybersecurity in the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, a question with regard to oversight. So can you talk about the oversight, or what type of oversight DGS has when it comes to the purchase or procurement of state-owned IT systems? So if you could, explain the procedure for the procurement of IT, and if you could walk us through it step by step. And the reason that I ask is that I've had several agency whistleblowers who've shown me and my staff photographs of a PennDOT warehouse that was filled with brand-new computers and servers and monitors, unused, but still purchased because the agency had money left over at the end of the year. So, you know, the Commonwealth is spending a billion dollars a year on IT, and as we consider consolidation to save taxpayer resources, wouldn't this be one of the very first places that we would start? So if you could, walk us through that procurement process.
Okay, sure. So first of all, a need is identified by an agency, a delivery center, or a group of agencies as a statewide need, for example. We do a notice of forthcoming procurement after reviewing the high-level anticipated requirements of the goods or services. A team is brought together of subject matter experts, usually multiple agencies are involved in that. If it was IT, it is almost always with, no, not almost, it is always with the participation of representation from the Office of Administration. Thereafter, specifications are developed as part of the statement of work, requirements are gathered in terms of quantity, for example, if you're talking about hardware. Once we have a draft statement of work prepared, normally, there is a supplier forum conducted where we test our assumptions for our specifications against the marketplace. We invite the folks out that provide the goods and services to have input into that process. They're a significant stakeholder. We want to be open and transparent, and we want to collect best-practice information to incorporate into our solicitation. Thereafter, the solicitation is formalized and posted for some period of time. Questions and answers are, there's a back and forth with proposers. Many times, there are demos, product demos, at some point during that process, and then, you know, we arrive at the closing date, where then that team reassembles, and evaluations are conducted, usually along three different parameters: the technical aspects of the proposal, the cost of the proposal, oh, actually, four, whether or not there is any small or small diverse business participation, and whether it's a domestic workforce component or not. After scoring is completed, then there is an intent to enter into negotiation. Well, that's not quite true. Assuming there are more than one or a significant number of competitors, we go to BAFO or Best and Final Offers. It could be a reverse auction at that point, and, you know, we get down to the final prices, if you will. Then the intent to award takes place. There are final negotiations conducted with the intended awardee. Then we go to the significant, sometimes time-consuming portion, which is routing for approvals that go through the Office of the Budget. Generally, with IT, it goes through OGC, the Office of the Attorney General, et cetera. And we have a contract.
And just to add on to Mr. Hess's comments, it is not uncommon for an order to be placed, the equipment to be received, and then time to be spent configuring those devices for deployment into facilities across the Commonwealth. It would not be a surprise to see some equipment in a particular warehouse waiting for that configuration activity to take place before it's deployed out to end-users. It's very, very common.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Sanisaro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said in my opening comments, we all have a concern moving forward with the management of IT, but particularly with respect to cybersecurity issues. And I know the administration does not believe that the approach laid out in Senate Bill 810 is the preferable one. Can you tell us, in the context of the likely threats we will be facing now and in the future on a cybersecurity basis, why the current structure, from the administration's standpoint, is preferable to the consolidation envisioned in Senate Bill 810?
Thank you. I'll get started, Eric, and then I'll turn it over to you. So first and foremost, when we look at industry and we look at the cyber threat landscape, it's changing all the time. So we need a degree of flexibility to be able to respond to those changes, not only in the threat landscape, which Eric will talk more about, but also in how services and technology are being marketed. So we need some flexibility. Then the decision-making through our partnership with DGS and others, we have to be able to determine, within the resources that we have, how are we going to make decisions to launch projects to accomplish improved services? That takes some time, that takes some money, and when we look at some studies that have been done in the And when we look at some studies that have been done in the marketplace, the most common themes across many states in the United States is this idea of funding, of people, and change. And when we look at the changing threat landscape, and I'll turn it over to Eric, this ability to respond quickly is one of the things that we would be seeking. Okay? Eric?
So, yeah, John referenced the cybersecurity threat landscape. It's morphing every day, so we're always vigilant, staying ahead of that. It requires a lot of attention. And through IT services transformation, we've made great strides through IT governance, being able to make decisions in a more streamlined fashion through working across all levels of government. And in the Commonwealth, we use a very multi-layered approach to our security posture. So when I mentioned people, process, technology, we've got, you know, policies based on best practices and NIST controls. And we've also got technologies that are basically in a layered approach, so that even if somebody was to get through one layer, there are multiple layers that they would need to get through. So we've established additional monitoring, additional alerting, so that if and when something happens, that we're able to respond quickly. Most recently, this past year, through this IT shared services approach and collaborative governance model, we established an incident response procedure, which is now the same for all state agencies, which basically streamlines if and when an incident occurs, how do we respond quickly, and how do we recover quickly, and how is it being done? And today, it's being done in the same fashion. So there's a consistency now in how incidents are handled, how incidents are communicated as well, through each phase of an incident. So multiple teams getting together. And so that's improved our cybersecurity culture, and it's also improved this agility to move. And I think that word's important because agility requires flexibility. We have to have flexibility in how we're able to respond. There might be a new threat that comes out that, tomorrow, that we're not aware of. We need to be able to be flexible enough to get, so that we can make decisions quickly to make sure that we're ahead of those threats through procurement or whatever other models that we need to do. So flexibility, when it comes to cybersecurity, is extremely important. With rigidity, we would then increase our risks, and there could be unintended consequences.
Chairman, might I add a quick anecdote to this? I remember one day, a year or two ago, when my phone rang, cellphone was going off, text messages, emails. It was former Secretary Minnick from the Office of Administration who was clearly agitated and was seeking an emergency procurement to mitigate cyber breach at the Department of Education. I was very pleased to inform her that, based on prior collaboration and commercial risk analysis to go along with the technological risk analysis, we already had a contract ready and waiting to provide identity protection in immediate response to that breach. Thank you.
And the particular triggering event for that was a mistake. It was a human error. It wasn't that we didn't have the right process in place or the right technology in place. It was simply that somebody made an error.
Right.
And so when we talk about some of the things that Eric has talked about, in terms of training and making sure that people understand that training and the real risks associated with making a mistake, we are better prepared and able to respond. So one of the things that I think we acquired was this ability where we made a decision through the process that Eric talked about. We determined that a breach may have occurred, and to protect those citizens, we proactively engage suppliers to create credit monitoring services. And we allowed those citizens to enroll, and we have monitored their credit through those external suppliers over 12 to 18 months.
That is correct.
Like, we have to be able to work together and be able to respond to something. You mentioned future threats. I'm not quite sure how we determine those, except to monitor the landscape and work with our partners and respond quickly.
Well, yeah, I don't think you can determine them sitting here today. I think we should just acknowledge the fact that they will happen. And I think we should be, that that helps us, obviously, with a structure that we think will respond most efficiently to it. So I take it by your response that you think that the structure that Senate Bill 810 would impose would take away that flexibility, and that would, in turn, hamper your ability to respond to those threats down the road. I'm just curious, and I know, Madam Chair, that we're running up against what this part, this panel, the time this panel was allotted to speak. But I'm just curious, is there other legislation currently pending, or that could be proposed that the administration thinks would be helpful in addressing these issues going forward?
So one of the things I think we've talked at length about this morning is this idea of collaboration and opening up the discussion and protecting some of the things that we do. I'm sure you understand that there's some sensitivity around the technology and some of the processes that we use for cybersecurity, but to be able to do that in an open and collaborative space across industry, across levels of government, including academia, these concepts, we really like. We actually have a similar structure for geo-enabled data in the Commonwealth. It's the State Geospatial Coordinating Board. And so we bring external suppliers, we bring academia, we bring multiple levels of government, federal, county, private industry, and we talk about improving the outcomes from this type of data. And when we start to think about data as currency and how data ought to move through an organization to deliver new outcomes to citizens and businesses, we start to generate new outcomes with a great degree of flexibility. We're adopting industry standards, and we believe that we are generating new outcomes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Stefano.
I've known you quite a while. It's okay, I do it all the time. I'll just be very brief, simple question, though. When we're talking about cybersecurity and our assets, IT assets in Pennsylvania, you know, we recently are forcing all of our counties to change their voting machines because we have outdated operating systems that can no longer be patched with proper cybersecurity. My question to you, then, is, in the Commonwealth, are we operating any old data systems that are no longer able to be updated? And if we are, why are we still running those?
Great question, complicated answer. Okay. When we build IT systems to automate business services, we tend to build those things based upon technology that's available at the time. We take in demands, needs, think of I want, I need, wouldn't it be nice if, demand from our business shareholders, so think of agency boards and commissions. And then we acquire, with partnership from DGS, a technology at the time. Sometimes, the market changes. New releases of technology come out, new operating systems, new devices, new capabilities. But we designed and build application systems to run on that originally-acquired technology. And we rely on the marketplace to help keep us current with patches, to protect vulnerabilities. And so every now and then, there is a particular application that automates that business service that we don't invest in properly. We don't collaborate to reduce the risk to the business. And every now and then, there's an old piece of technology that we don't, that, how do I say this? Needs attention. There are some systems that run on old technology today. The risk associated with inappropriate access is something that we have secondary controls in place on. I hope I gave you enough information to help you understand that it isn't an easy answer.
And if I could just add to that, I mean, so that's why we conduct regular risk assessments, either through the Department of Homeland Security internally, as well as regularly through a third-party supplier, which is a best practice, to identify what those risks are. And then, as John mentioned earlier, putting in the appropriate compensating control or countermeasure. I mentioned those layers before. We can add additional layers where we see areas of risk, particularly if a system is outdated. How do we segment that off the network? There's different measures we can take. So identifying those risks through assessment, regular assessment, and then mitigating through compensating controls is part of what we do.
We're always trying to balance the need to protect and mitigate risk with the need to do something innovative and new.
So I think the brief answer was yes. We have old systems. And in the efforts of consolidation as we're moving forward, we should look into ways of taking these old systems and somehow then putting that data into newer systems, something we need to be talking about as we keep moving forward. Because I believe part of labor and industry is still running an old mainframe from the late '60s.
So the mainframe itself is not from the '60s, just to be clear, right? But the applications intended to automate business systems started in the '60s, and through regular maintenance, has been put onto modern tech, pieces of hardware, modern technology, with modern operating systems that have the right cyber protections in them. Most of what is at risk is small server-based systems, running technologies from companies that you might know of in the marketplace. I'm not going to name names. Because we work with them, and we value their services.
I just want to make sure I identified those risks.
Yes, thank you. The mainframe is not from the '60s, not the one that's in place.
That does make us all feel better. Thank you. A lot of questions with regard to specific practices, you know, things like application companies who are now making large sums of money, not from selling applications, but by checking licenses. And just, you know, I have some questions that I want to follow up on, you know, how are we keeping track of those licenses so that we don't have to pay those large sums of money? Things like asset management, because there was no mention in your testimony with regard to asset management. I'm not going to ask you to answer those questions now, but please know that I will be following up. I have a very long list of questions with regard to specific practices. And I think some of the questions you might, with regard to penetration testing and different things like that, you're not going to want to answer publicly. But if we could continue to have that dialogue, I would really appreciate it. Just a few last questions on contracts. Could you speak to the reverse auction process guarantees about continued best value several years into a contract? Can you just briefly talk about that?
Well, the reverse auction is held, of course, prior to the contract formulation. And so many times, one of the things that I had witnessed coming into this role five years ago was that many of the contracts that were existing at that time had built-in provisions for escalation clauses that were in the contract. I will tell you that, over the course of time, we have been renegotiating those contracts with considerable success. And some of the savings that I alluded to earlier are, in fact, directly due to our surveillance of contracts that are becoming more mature and continuing to attempt to wring value out of those with the providers.
Thank you. That was certainly succinct. I appreciate that. Eric, I know that we have had many conversations about this type of question, and that is the steps that are being taken to ensure the integrity of the Commonwealth's IT infrastructure as it relates to vendors who are controlled by foreign adversaries, China, Russia. You know, there are lists of products and companies that our federal government doesn't do business with. What type of steps are we taking here in the Commonwealth?
Yeah, you mentioned the federal policy. They have some language, and so we follow that, right? So when the federal government provides concrete policy direction in relation to vendors or products or whatnot, again, we follow the federal standards. Those products are not on our network. And we also work with the Department of Homeland Security closely when it comes to intelligence related to these types of threats, whether it be supply chain or whatever else, type of new threat that might arise, and then, of course, working with procurement. But it's basically looking to the federal standard and following those, and then having the flexibility with policy to be able to make decisions through governance if a rapid decision needs to be made. It's a very fluid space, this whole topic that we're talking about, because, again, a new threat might come tomorrow, and we need to be, again, agile and flexible to be able to take action if and when something occurs.
Thank you. And I've been told we need to move on to the next panel. Chairman Sanisaro, certainly, if you have more questions or any of the members have more questions, I hope that we can continue this conversation. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to our second panel. And joining us today for this part of the discussion is Mr. John Allwine, Unisys Public Sector Region Director for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Mr. Allwine, welcome, and appreciate you here testifying today. And I would ask that you would please summarize your remarks as much as possible. I think we probably have a lot of questions.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Phillips Hill, Senator Sanisaro, and the remainder of the Senate Technology Committee. Thank you very much for allowing me to testify upon your Senate Bill 810 on behalf of Unisys Corporation.
Mr. Allwine, could you make sure that your microphone is on?
We're good.
Very good, thank you.
Better. So appreciate the time. I'm John Allwine. I represent Unisys. I'm the Regional Director of Public Sector. Here, I live in Harrisburg. I'm a lifelong resident of the Commonwealth of Dolphin County, and I also attended Chippensburg University, somewhat product of our ecosystem. Unisys, just from a basis standpoint, so you're understanding, is a $3 billion global IT services provider headquartered in Blue Belt, Pennsylvania. We provide security-centric solutions for governments all around the world. In 1945, we developed the first commercially-available computer system in conjunction with the University of Pennsylvania. In 2014, we launched the first of its kind hybrid private cloud for the Commonwealth, putting in the forefront of all the states. We are prepared to deliver services that protect the data for all 45 state agencies, boards, and commissions. We provide security solutions, advanced data analytics, and infrastructure services to over two dozen states within the U.S. The Commonwealth, like other states, needs to be on the cutting edge of transforming the citizen's experience and digital capabilities that improve the engagement and make governments more efficient. Residents expect more Amazon and Google-like services, but hyper-security in that the protection of their data. This digital journey or modernization demands a shift from an IT-centric hardware view to governance structures, business-driven outcomes, and leveraging that data I spoke of earlier. Establishing a digital governance approach also reduces the chance for bad projects. You put in the COBIT-type management and frameworks, it helps protect overspending and gives the governance that we all need. And it also drives not only the collaboration, but the accountability in those teams inside of that governance to drive positive outcomes. Successful digital modernization depends on four basic areas: establishing the governance, providing the balance of power and accountability between our modern qualified IT leadership team and the agencies, leveraging risk-based decision-making. So when we look at innovation, we know all the risks. And a commitment to strong cybersecurity program in that oversight. The role of the CIO within the states across the U.S., and Pennsylvania included, as we move away from owning data centers and operating data centers, it's really about acquiring it through IT as a service, on-demand. Being the CIO is more challenging than ever. Being the CIO is more challenging than ever. It's more about the complexities of the risk management and those innovations than about the latest hardware or software piece. It's about meeting complex agency needs and securing huge amount of data as we develop the future. In the past three years, chatbots, AI, and mobile applications, and cloud become technical solutions that states barely even looked at just a few, three years ago. And it's a demand that our citizens, our customer, demand today. As currently drafted, the appointment of the director, only qualification is about five years' experience in public entity with proper industry certifications. Now, we understand that finding a qualified individual that, of the CIO is challenging, but extremely crucial. We believe that current language is limited in focus in order to meet the goals of the Senate bill and the demands of our citizens. A more diverse background would be ideal in that role. So successful CIOs have degrees in finance, engineering, and other disciplines that require structure and data-driven decision-making capabilities. Specific certifications don't always determine successful outcomes. To help the Secretary of Administration find and select a person with required skills, a possible suggestion would be using advisory board in that vetting process. There are a couple of models out there that you could suggest or look at where the secretary or governor submits candidates to a list, to an entity outside of the Commonwealth, someone like C-CAP Technology Committee, that vets the pool and submits ratings or feedback. Florida uses a model of nominating committee investigates the applicants, they confirm eligibility, and then they interview before voting on recommendations. Those recommendations go back to the governor, and the governor still retains complete appointment power. He's just armed with better data. Separately, we suggest that an option would be that Pennsylvania or other CIOs create their own advisory boards for information and background similar to states such as Nevada, Oregon, the city of Atlanta. And some federal agencies also use private sector advisory boards when they're looking at strategy, when they're looking at options for the future. This would not stacked with vendors. What we've seen work well in the past are companies from the area, such as Hershey, Highmark, and the others. Talked a lot about, in the last panel, about collaborative relationships. We fully support that. We really appreciate the collaboration within the CISO's office, within the CIO's office, and the positive conversations we have on a daily and weekly basis. That's really paramount to this partnership of the vendor community, partner community, and the Commonwealth's staff. Coordination goes beyond private and private. We have to go to that internal. We have to build that at the agency level. That communication is paramount. You had mentioned three areas of coordination in the bill. Governance framework. We view that as, as based upon the COBIT framework from, from the information that you had shared with us. This collaboration makes a lot of sense. It gives a framework. The office and director currently work with the agencies at developing business cases. Those business cases are recorded and vetted over time. They bring the business justification. It's not just about the IT. We have to make sure we're addressing the business solution for the agency. Strategic plan. Currently, you have listed as a one-year strategic plan. Our suggestion is a three-year strategic plan. It provides for a better, bigger-picture view and alignment to the governor's strategic and multi-year plan. It provides transparency to staff as well as partners of the vision, the goals, and the objectives to meet those goals. This plan should be made public in corporate suggestions and feedback of the private sector, potentially the panels that we suggested. Kansas and North Carolina currently do that type of process of reiteration and also publicly posting. The public internet portal that you mentioned, we support. This portal system is really a best practice, becoming a best practice. The strategic plan should be posted as well as the operational plans to execute with specific objectives and achieved timeframes for that delivery of that value to the customer. Eric talked a lot about the Joint Cyber City Security Task Force. We support the view and suggest a few policies that would collaborate with his office, the CISO's office. Both Connecticut and Florida, as examples, have established these task forces that confront these very challenging cyber threats on a daily basis. Security and risk management has become the number-one issue this year for NACIO Top 10 Issues. Examples of threats that are out there? Louisiana schools. The governor had to issue a state of emergency because of the cyber attacks our schools had experienced. Texas, there are 22 towns. Baltimore, a cost of $18 million currently this year to recover their data. To that area, we suggest tight coordination with the state CISO, sharing the language and the recommendation of this panel with the public and the agencies, and require feedback and response to the recommendations from the agencies upon that. And we also suggest having the annual report produced, not just a one-time report from that potential panel. Examples, New Jersey publishes an annual reports with IT progress on all cybersecurity activity. Maryland statewide information technology master plan, which includes cybersecurity measures, also is posted on a annual basis. And Texas also just put in a new program around information resources. They publish annual threat report. So in conclusion, we support Senate Bill 810, the enhancement to the Commonwealth's governance, and we appreciate the thought and the collaboration it's driving. We consider that having the director work with the legislature and the judiciary branch also in that review, protection, and oversight makes a lot of sense. Like you mentioned earlier, Senator Hill, it's about bringing consolidation across the states. So we would like to reiterate one last point, which is the importance of fostering accountability and transparency, bringing the security into everything we do. It's in our homes. It's in our TVs. It's in our smoke detectors. So we need to understand the security threat to our Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allwine. Senator Almond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate your testimony this morning. Thank you for being here. I wanted to follow up the comments you made in conclusion with respect to transparency, accountability, coordination. The previous panel, we heard, we heard a lot about flexibility, flexibility and nimbleness and, and citing the need for flexibility, citing the need for that as a reason to, or raising, using that to raise concerns with Senate Bill 810, using that to cite concerns with the legislation. And so would be interested in your perspective, your, your perspective on this tension perhaps between needing flexibility, but also having in statute the governance structure that you talked about and, and ensuring that the taxpayers, the General Assembly can hold agencies accountable, that there's, there's transparency, there's transparency with, with respect to contracts, ensuring coordination. So be interested in your perspective, your perspective on the need for flexibility, but also the importance of accountability, coordination, transparency, governance framework, and how capturing, the importance of capturing that in statute.
Sure, sure, sure. Not mutually exclusive, right? So you need both. As in, in business, I'm held accountable every day. But I also have the flexibility to drive upon those goals because of the governance my organization has put in place. So the governance that you talk about, creating the framework, leveraging the federal model that the Commonwealth is, is in the process of adopting, and taking that step further, something like the COBIT framework that you've mentioned, gives the framework of accountability, the structure to thou shalt, and hold the objectives and the goals. You know, what do we expect out of that delivery? What, in the end of the day, what's required? That doesn't mean you don't have any flexibility to operate. In fact, I think it gives, it entrusts the people that sat here or in my position, my management trusts me to make decisions based upon my 33 years in IT, working with the Commonwealth. So I, just having, the, the framework is critical. So there's accountability. You need to have the flexibility to operate in the time, in the moment. Then the, the governance would be, how do I record that? How do I come back and account for that and record back to the standards? So I don't think it's, it's one or the other. It is definitely a combination. So great question.
Thank you. Mr. Allwine, I'm going to see if you can share your thoughts. You, you talked about some different governing structures for IT in different states. We, we have heard discussed creating a Commonwealth agency or a cabinet-level position specifically for IT. Have other states done this? Have other states created a cabinet-level position for information technology? And do you know what their experiences have been? I mean, my, my thought is that our IT is too important and that that person who's in charge of it should really have a seat at the table in our state government to be able to always talk to the other agencies and directly to the governor to help with assuring that best practices and, and best procurement and, and the best IT systems are spread across all of our agencies.
True, true. So there's definitely a transformation happening across all the states within the U.S. We have seen very similar activities in Kansas, Georgia, as well as Virginia. You know, a number of years ago, Virginia created the organization called VITA. And that is the organization that gives all of IT services for the agencies. I think the balance that we see, and the federal government, by the way, also has, you know, the same type of COBIT-based structures for accountability and empowerment of that. Being a Commonwealth, we have some challenges of just the structure of our political and ecosystem versus a state. The ability, flexibility, and the governance that we talked about earlier still needs to be in that position if it's held at the higher level. The balance of power, the accountability, it's very delicate balance because the budgets are with one person. Do you see a consolidation of budgets benefiting the states as they come into a consolidation? You will have unified, you know, slimmed-down consolidated spend. So yes, ultimately, you will see better cohesion when you have true transformation in a consolidated model. This utility, the shared service that we're building, doesn't need to be too different for each agency. There are some very unique federal monies that sponsor very unique systems. And that's the challenge we have and many states have. You just have to figure that out. You have to look at that, under, understand that. Typically, the health and human services arena is where that resides. A lot in the transportation. You know, the federal government's getting more and more involved in that. And I think as a holistic whole, you'll see a lot more federal government involvement in mandating the level of security, the budgets that are put out there. It's taking a line item now on most budgets versus before it was embedded in the IT organization budget.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman.
So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Allwine, since it seems this issue of flexibility is one of the major concerns of the administration when considering this, this legislation, I want to kind of build off what Senator Almond asked you before. Are there, from your perspective, as someone who supports the approach in this, in this bill, are there any aspects of the bill that might be modified to provide or better ensure that we provide for flexibility moving forward should this consolidation be adopted?
We do. I, I think in, at a high level, the importance starts with the governance. There's a huge need for that. And, and through that process, that creates a better communication through procurement. It creates a better communication ability. And typically, the people running operations of an IT organization are slightly different and use different language than the CISOs or the security arena. Something like the COBIT framework is huge in breaking down the barriers of that communication break. It helps define the accountability, the responsibility, and how they interact so they have the flexibility to act on the moment and that. So I think that's where we not only support, but encourage a beginning point of, is the criticality of that governance framework that needs to be put in place early in the process and then put the rest of the organization into that so they all understand it and can act upon it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allwine. Thank you. We very much appreciate you being here and testifying today. And we will now move on to our third and final panel. Joining us today is Representative Seth Grove, who has House Bill 56, which is the companion piece of legislation to Senate Bill 810. Representative Grove, thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Glad to join you. Chairman Phillips Hill, Chairman Sanosero, which by the way, as I was the Secretary of State Government Committee, Senator Sanosero had to walk me through his name to, I still remember it today. Senator Almond and Senator Hutchinson, good to see you again.
You're doing, you're doing very well, Mr. Grove.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Really appreciate inviting me to speak at the Senate Communications and Technology Committee about reforming how the Commonwealth handles information technology and cybersecurity. For quite some time, IT projects and IT expenditures by state agencies could be described by one of the following statements. The project is over budget. The project is not completed on time. The project fails to provide the services which the agency paid for. The most notable example of this remains the state police radio system, which after 20 years and several vendors has a running price tag of more than $800 million while still failing to perform as intended. Another example is the UC call center, where the Labor and Industry Department spent over $100 million over three years without making the necessary upgrades to its system. By the way, this is done over multiple administrations. It's not a Republican, it's not a Democratic thing. It is ingrained within the agencies and the bureaucracy. After working on this issue over the past few years, I have learned that state government does not have a good hand on how much money is being spent on IT or what the Commonwealth receives for its spending. In order to address these issues, we drafted legislation last session, which was modeled after North Carolina's Department of Information Technology to correct a pervasive problem in the Commonwealth. This legislation, House Bill 56 and Senate Bill 810, would codify aspects of the governor's original executive order to consolidate the Commonwealth's IT services. By the way, OA basically did a 180 on the governor's executive order and went a different route when executing his executive order. So the legislation was drafted after the original vision. It was OA, and I, I don't know how that works when the governor does an executive order and agencies do something different. Probably a management issue where the governor needs to go back and correct his executive order. But the legislation was drafted to the governor's original executive order. Updating it to what IT did now, I think, is appropriate because the vision was to codify how OA has modeled what it's doing now. Why that's important is I have no doubt in 812, maybe 20 years, Why that's important is, I have no doubt in 812, maybe 20 years from now, a governor will come in and say, "This consolidated model is inefficient, and we can reduce costs by breaking it up and sending it to different agencies and be more effective." The idea is codify it, lock it down in law, so in case administration wants to do a significant change, they come to us and we can have a conversation around it. We have been open to OA asking them, I've heard the flexibility issues before, what doesn't provide you the flexibility, or what do we have in this language that you aren't doing now? Because God forbid, I do not want to be an IT professional micromanaging their day-to-day applications. The goal of this is governance. As intended by the governor with his executive orders, this legislation consolidates all state IT under OIT and the CIO for the purpose of improving the management of the Commonwealth's IT resources and services. In order to carry out the codified authority under the proposed legislation, the CIO is required to review and assess the current IT resources, assess the needs of each Commonwealth agency. After completing this review, the CIO will work the governor's budget office to develop a plan for addressing the funding of the Commonwealth's IT assets, resources, and services. Additionally, as part of managing the state's IT, the legislation requires the CIO to develop a comprehensive IT plan every two years. This plan, which is due by October 1st, is to be given to the governor and the General Assembly, and will include an inventory of the Commonwealth's IT assets and major projects, which is defined as any project which will spend over $500,000. An inventory of the significant unmet IT needs for the Commonwealth over the next five years, a funding schedule for IT projects over the next five years, analysis of the opportunities for statewide initiatives to create greater efficiencies within IT while improving the effectiveness of state programs, something we do not get and we do not see. All IT is buried in the GGO funds currently. So this will provide a better guide for not only management of how we're going to fund IT projects moving forward, but in counting of what's happening currently. In order to empower the CIO to fulfill his duties under the draft, the CIO is charged with approving the disbursement of state dollars out of newly-created account in the General Fund. This account is designated as IT fund, which will receive all funds currently used for IT, pay salaries for employees at state agencies handling IT, and any transfers authorized by the General Assembly, again, providing accountability on how much we're actually spending and can account for those dollars. While the draft establishes a skeleton for the funding of IT services, the General Assembly should continue to discuss this issue. IT is the infrastructure of the 21st century, a core function of government, which is critical to the delivery of government services. It is hardwired into our buildings and to nearly everything the state does, which will have a point when the administration will ask for testifying, they testified via laptop computers. Due to pervasiveness of IT in nearly all that state government does, the General Assembly should consider whether funding for IT should handle in the capital budget or remain in the General Fund. House Bill 56 and Senate Bill 810 also provide OIT and the CIO with the authority to manage all IT contracts. The legislation will require any contract for IT services or hardwire, which is over budget, not completed on time, or fails to provide the contracted service to enter a remediation plan. If the contract continues to not meet the performance standards established by the office, the CIO would direct the Treasury to spend payments to the vendor. In order to foster transparency and accountability within IT, Senate Bill 810 and House Bill 56 are both drafted to establish a transparency portal to show the status of these IT contracts and projects. As drafted, the publicly accessible portal will provide the following information: a brief description of the project, the original budget for the project, the original date the project is scheduled to be completed on, the project's original scope of work, the performance requirements for the project. Do you think we'll have any projects over budget or over time, if the administration's required to actually provide that, on whether a real-time basis or every week or every month? How many times do we only find out about over-budget computer projects in newspapers? We didn't know about PSP until it hit the news. We didn't know about unemployment comp until it hit the news. Our constituents look at us and say, "How the heck do you allow them to spend $100 million on IT projects without knowing there's major problems?" And by the way, most of those major problems are in the original steps. So if we know there's a problem right away, we can get them corrected, get a remediation plan, and make sure the project can continue on budget and on time. And maybe there's some circumstances where we do need to appropriate money. I think the Treasury has pointed out in a House hearing that they were able to spend additional money on the front end, but the overall budget was actually under budget and they were able to do it on time. But we can't have those conversations without some accountability, some honest communication, and coordination with the administration. If a project is operating on time, remains within its original scope, its performance requirements have remained within its budget, the portal will designate the program as green or good. However, if the project is failing in just one of these categories, whether it exceeds its original budget, is operating beyond its scope of work, is failing to be completed on time, or has failed to meet its performance requirements, the project will be designated as red. These projects, which have been designated red, would then be forced to adopt a remediation plan, as I mentioned earlier, and if the project remains red, payment to the vendor will ultimately be suspended. As part of managing IT contracts and funding, these bills give the responsibility of handling the procurement of all IT resources to OIT and the CIO. This marks an important transition from what currently happens in the Commonwealth as IT procurement is handled as if it were a pencil or road salt by DGS. By the way, under the Corbett administration, IT was handled in office administration. When the Wolf administration came in, they moved it back to DGS. By moving procurement to OIT under OA, these purchasing IT systems from vendors will be those who actually understand IT. IT is very, very complex. Having an IT professional understand procurement law is a lot easier than having a procurement person try to understand what information technology is. House Bill 56 and House Bill 810 not only consolidates the management of the Commonwealth's IT systems and services, this legislation strengthens government transparency regarding IT projects and expenditures. The proposed legislation strengthens transparency for IT by establishing stricter rules regarding conflict of interests, the conflict of interest provisions, were the result of testimony received last session during a House State Government Committee public hearing. This testimony, which we received, was concerning, as we were told consultants were charging state agencies millions of dollars to perform a contracted service. However, rather than performing a designated service, which is their contract for, the consultant would operate as private firms, usually consisting of a few consultants and secure additional work, quote, "for the firm." These consultants hire workers for the new project and are rumored to receive kickbacks to profit off the state agency, all while they are not doing the work which they were originally contracted to do for the state agency. Since that hearing, we have only heard of more examples of consultants effectively being paid by the state to run their businesses in a manner which profits off a state agency. This information indicates that consulting firms are taking millions from taxpayers while providing agencies with substandard work. In order to address the problem, House Bill 56 and Senate Bill 810 would force not only the CIO, but anyone working with agencies on IT projects to not have a personal or financial interest in a project. Should the CIO or employee managing IT have a financial interest in the project, they would be guilty of a third-degree felony. Additionally, anyone convicted of having a financial interest will be forced to repay the Commonwealth any amount they benefited from the project along with court fees, and we are talking of millions of dollars. At the same time, if the CIO or anyone attempts to defraud the agency for personal benefits stemming from an IT contract, would be guilty of a first-degree misdemeanor and be liable to pay both fines and court costs. These structural changes to how the management and purchase of IT would positively benefit the Commonwealth by ensuring those who purchase IT understand it. All contracts meet IT performance standards. Projects and contracts which are awarded by state agencies are not subject to improper personal and/or financial interests of anyone associated with a contract or project. These bills would also address an important aspect of IT, which does not get addressed nearly enough, cybersecurity. As state government keeps records of people's most private information from their address to their social security numbers, securing this data is critical. While the Office of OIT would establish strict cybersecurity standards under the bill, these bills also establish a collaborative approach to cybersecurity which extends beyond the executive branch. Considering not too long ago, one of our caucuses was a victim of a ransomware attack which cost over $700,000 to address, is important for the state to adopt a collaborative approach to cybersecurity. These bills establish collaboration between all three branches of state government to identify and address emerging cybersecurity threats. Attack on one is attack on all. This process includes creating a joint cybersecurity oversight committee, which would include the CIO, three members of the Senate appointed by the President pro temp, two members appointed by the Minority Leader of the Senate, three members of the Senate appointed by the, three members of the House appointed by the Speaker of the House, two members appointed by the Minority Leader of the House, a member from each IT office of the four legislative caucuses, the Attorney General, the CIO for the Attorney General, Auditor General, Treasurer, and the PUC, the State Police Commissioner, four individuals with experience in cybersecurity appointed by the governor and are represented from the National Guard with experience in cybersecurity, brings all of our cybersecurity assets under one house to discuss what's happening with attacks to our networks. The committee would provide the governor, President pro temp of the Senate, Speaker of the House, and Chief Justice of the Courts with a report on current emergency cybersecurity threats. In closing, these bills would lead to a better use of taxpayer dollars by codifying the consolidation of IT under OIT. It would improve the procurement of IT by leaving procurement to those who understand information technology. The bill would establish strict standards for managing IT contracts and provide the Commonwealth a mechanism and statute to recoup taxpayer funds when vendors do not fulfill the terms of their contract. Additionally, this proposal will safeguard taxpayer dollars by establishing penalties for conflict of interest by state employees and consultants hired by state agencies. As a result, the Commonwealth will be able to exercise greater oversight and provide greater transparency for IT expenditures. Finally, the bill would improve the state's cybersecurity and create a collaborative process to ensure all branches of government are prepared to handle emerging cybersecurity threats. Thank you again for inviting me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Representative Grove. Senator Almond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I take note that all the members present are former House colleagues of yours.
It's a good work ethic.
I don't know if that indicates the high regard we have for you or just the, we're just grateful to have the opportunity to question you. I'm not sure, we'll see how the questioning goes. But I, I'm interested, and we had the conversation with the previous panel, about, again, this tension between governance, accountability, transparency, measuring outcomes, return on investment versus flexibility and nimbleness. And you mentioned your testimony, again, the statewide radio and the debacle that was the statewide radio prior to PSP taking management for that process, the P-25 rollout, and just the phenomenal work, again, that Major Stackhouse and her team has done. And I remember participating in a hearing last session in which members were asking Major Stackhouse about the progress and asked her directly, "Who do we hold accountable?" And she literally raised, "I'm accountable. I'm the individual that's accountable for the success of this rollout," which is why I was alarmed when I had heard that there was a possibility that management would again fall under OA. But I think the success that PSP has had in recent years, the P-25 rollout, really centers on accountability, on transparency, on governance, on collaboration, and the collaboration included collaboration with the General Assembly. And so I think that's phenomenally important going forward. I'm interested in your perspective on that tension between accountability and transparency and the flexibility. You heard the testimony by OA and the concerns they expressed with the legislation. Are you satisfied that the bill that you've introduced provides the flexibility, the nimbleness that is needed as technology changes, as we have to respond to cybersecurity threats, while also ensuring that the governance framework is provided and there are strict requirements with respect to accountability and transparency?
So, in my tenure here, I've learned that everybody loves transparency and accountability unless it's on them, and then there's suddenly issues with accountability and transparency. I think the structure of this provides governance. It provides, for the first time, and I have not read every bill that we've ever done, every statute that's in current law, I'm not aware of anything we have in statute that actually governs cybersecurity or information technology. Wholeheartedly, it's generally left up to the administration to do whatever they want whenever they want. At some point, it comes back to us. We have to allocate resources. Taxpayers have to fund the bills. I think it's prudent for us to set governance structure in statute in a collaborative way. Now, I've asked numerous times, quote, "What is your issue with the flexibility in this bill?" We're taking the governor's executive order, which we're, I've told them, "We're willing to adjust based on what you've already done." So we're codifying their current practice in law. It doesn't say that you shall buy X number of computers, you shall do X number of things. It provides top-level governance to what they're doing currently. And again, that's protecting us moving forward to make sure we don't have someone else come into the executive and say, "We're breaking all this stuff up." Because there is, well, there may be some cost savings, there is a cost to moving people around and readjusting stuff. It takes time. So locking that down protects us moving forward. Setting a governance structure, how you operate moving forward, I think is appropriate and is the role of the General Assembly to do that. I have not seen, or they have not given any language, quote, "to fix the flexibility issue." I don't believe it exists within this legislation. I think they have the flexibility to do what they need to do on a day-to-day basis to manage the Commonwealth. It just provides a lot of transparency and a lot of accountability, which I think the taxpayers and we as appropriators of dollars would greatly appreciate. And for the first time ever, I mean, have you ever seen an IT budget come through? I mean, it doesn't exist. You know, I've been on appropriations for nearly a decade now. All that is buried somewhere in those documents, in those GGOs. It would be nice for a point to say, you know, "How are these projects going?" And having a plan. What is the public plan for replacing it? You know, you brought up the old, or I think Senator Stefano brought up the old mainframe. How much old mainframe do we have? We should have a discussion how we fund this. It is important. We have to stay up with technology moving forward, and as a combat veteran, you know what the enemy does. They want to get into our systems, they want critical information from American citizens. We can't allow it.
I'll just conclude by saying, a session or two ago, we worked across the aisle, the House and the Senate, worked across the aisle, and worked with the administration to take the executive order establishing the Office of Inspector General and placing that important office and the important work of that office into statute. And I think there's been a tremendous benefit to that. Now, there's differences between the offices, and I certainly recognize that, and the executive orders. But I think, I think the principle applies. I think there's value to placing these key positions in statute, providing for the governance structure. I think it does provide a measure of accountability and transparency. And if you recall, when we began our work on the Inspector General legislation, the administration and the General Assembly, we were pretty far apart. In fact, the first version of that legislation resulted in a veto. But I give the governor and I give his administration a great deal of credit. We were able to continue to work together, continue to have the dialogue, work through our differences in the legislation, and ultimately, I think, got a good piece of legislation signed into law. And again, I think there's been a tremendous benefit to that. So my hope is that this will not result in a veto, but will follow the same path and we'll see a benefit and that the General Assembly, the House and Senate, and the governor will be able to collaborate and finalize language that can be signed into law. I appreciate your work on the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Almond. Chairman Sanosiero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. Are there any substantive differences between the legislation you've proposed in the House and the Senate bill that we're discussing here this morning?
I think it's similar. I haven't personally scrubbed the two, but I think they're very, very similar.
[inaudible]
I mean, one's a Senate bill, one's a House bill.
We assume that. But again, not knowing which vehicle's going to wind up moving, it would be interesting to know, you know, if there are any substantive differences so we can consider that as well.
And listen, I am fully open to working with the administration on this. Semi-language, I'm more than happy to have that. I know Senator Chairman Phillips Hill is also the same way. Again, the goal is not, I'm not interested in micromanaging. I don't think anybody in the General Assembly is interested in micromanaging IT day-to-day. Not our purview. But I think we need to build in some accountability and some knowledge. And I'm pretty sure Governor Wolf did not like walking into office and having to deal with the unemployment compensation system. It was horrible for everybody involved with that, the General Assembly, the general public. Making sure that doesn't happen again does require a level of accountability and cooperation from all sides. The goal of this is to make sure we don't have that.
Right. Thanks.
Representative Grove, thank you very much. I have enjoyed working with you on this legislation, both in the House and now in the Senate. And I think, I feel very encouraged coming out of this hearing today. This was the beginning of what I view as being a very productive dialogue, to get us that efficiency, that accountability, that transparency, and the flexibility to make sure that all Pennsylvanians' personal information and our government networks that hold all those important pieces of information are safe and secure. So thank you for your work. Thank you for being here and testifying today. To the members of the committee, thank you. I think that this conversation will most definitely continue. And regardless of which bill finds itself on the governor's desk, I certainly think it will be a very good collaborative product. So, again, thank you to everyone. So, again, thank you to everyone who is here, and I now recess the Senate Communications and Technology Committee until the call of the chair.